Um, excuse me, it's 7:01. I'd like to welcome everyone to the January meeting for the Jessamine County Board of Education. We're here at East Jessamine Middle School. Mr. Moore, will you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Before we start that, I do have Lead Pastor Lee Faust. Oh, yeah. I have the lead, we have the Lead Pastor Lee Faust with the Jessamine Christian Church, who's joining us to open us up for prayer, and we appreciate you being here.
Father, we're privileged, and on my way out, if you need me to bless that crowd right there, they must be on the docket tonight. Well, let's pray. Our Father in heaven, Lord, we know that you have a great love for us and this community, and we just thank you, Father, for just blessing us in so many different ways. Lord, you know our hearts desire, and we pray tonight for the school as we look at our second semester here. We pray, Lord, for all our staff members, those who are teaching and those who are supporting. Father, we pray for our superintendent. We thank you for Matt and his leadership. We pray for his whole team of leadership and these administrators, our school board. Lord, we pray for everyone involved, from teaching to those who unlocked the building first thing in the morning, to those who stay to the very end and they're turning the lights off. Lord, we could give you a long laundry list of ways specifically that we could pray. I do ask that as the vaccines have begun to be handed out, I'll just pray that, Lord, that would stifle this crazy COVID virus and that, Lord, you would help us to be healthy and whole and strong as we finish this semester. Father, we know that the budgets get handed down every year, and the state seems, they seem to shrink. And so, Lord, I just pray for a creative staff here, that you would multiply their resources and give them exactly what they need to finish this year in strong. Lord, we ask that you would raise up new teachers and more teachers and substitute teachers and school bus drivers and volunteers and parents and those who can fill in the gaps with generosity and acts of service. Lord, we thank you so much for this evening, for this meeting specifically. Lord, we ask that we seek your wisdom and guidance. Father, that you would allow this meeting to be used to make wise decisions, that we would think of all those that are involved, to do good for those, for our community, for those who trust and put confidence in this leadership and this board. Father, help us to lead with integrity, that all of our decisions reflect what's good and right. Father, keep us from any short-sightedness, pettiness, Lord. I pray that you'd help us to make decisions that are good for all and guard us, Lord, against any blind self-interest. Father, we ask that you'd give us humility and leadership, and that we'd always seek your will. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen and amen. You guys have a wonderful evening.
Would you like me to go ahead and call the role? Board Chair, Stephen Scrivener.
Here.
Vice Chair, Bobby Welsh.
Here.
In his brand-new seat. Denise Adams.
Here.
Amy Day.
Here.
And Deborah Hood.
Here.
We have five present. We have a quorum.
All right. We'll leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have a flag in here this evening?
I, yes, we'll go ahead and use the flag that's above the podium there, and we've got some gentlemen from the football team. Okay, we've got a flag back here. Okay. We have some gentlemen for the football team that are going to help lead us in this, I believe.
Yeah, let's let them all make their way in here, please. Will, we leave this in the pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God and in this world, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, sir. Our mission statement, Jessamine County Schools exist to motivate and challenge every child every day to be a caring, responsible citizen and a high-level thinker, performer, communicator, and learner for life. Let us remember that that should guide our decisions and discussions here tonight. We've all had a chance to look over the agenda this evening. Do we have any needed revisions for it? We're good? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as is? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, we've got two meeting minutes to approve, our December 14th meeting from last year and then our January the 4th meeting from this year. Are there any revisions needed to the December 14 meeting minutes? Okay, any for the January 4th meeting minutes? All right. All right, Denise is going to make a motion to approve both sets of meeting minutes.
Second.
Bobby will second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir. I'm going to go ahead and go right to our recognitions. And I want to start by apologizing to our East Jessamine football players, because this is something we wanted to do much sooner, but we were trying to keep a little bit of separation during COVID, but we finally got you guys here. So, welcome, and we are just so proud of you guys. If you guys, if our board hasn't heard yet, this is a team that lost one game all season and finished it beating Boyle County for the Salt River Conference Championship. Now, at Boyle County, there you go. You feel free, Bobby, you feel free to add anything you want to this. But just incredible season, and Rod, if you'd like to go ahead and come up to the podium there. This is our coach that has led this team, and I just want to tell you personally how much we appreciate what you've done, because we were talking about this before you arrived. I think the thing that's special about this team and about the work that you do is that this season wasn't necessarily about just winning a bunch of games, but it truly was developing the character of these young men and going out and enjoying that sport and coming together to, as a team, and accomplishing something so successful. So, I really feel like you guys probably got a whole lot more out of this besides just that championship this year and just proud of the work that you've done, Rod.
Thank you, sir. First and foremost... Without him, nothing. Every bit of this means absolutely nothing. So, thank you to Jesus, giving us the freedom to be here, be able to come together like this, be able to do something as wonderful as playing a game of football. Want to thank the Board of Education for having us here today. Greatly appreciate you all bringing us out here. Recognize the team. Want to thank all the parents for trusting a bum like me to be able to lead their kids. They, I don't know why you trust me, but greatly appreciate y'all trusting me to be able to invest in your young men. Thank you to my coaching staff, Coach Music, Coach Braxton, Coach Wilson, all the sacrifices they made in the game planning. Thank you to Joe Schwinger and Coach Townsend for just voluntarily sacrificing for this team. I think that's been one of the big things, big themes about us this year in the midst of COVID. Everything that's going on is the level of sacrifice. These young men put their bodies through in order to just lay it all on the line for this community, bring something special back to this community. So, greatly appreciate the young men, everything that they sacrifice. We got a couple of awards that we want to recognize them with. Now, before we do this, I want you all to know that this coaching staff absolutely despises every kid getting a trophy. We got a lot of trophies to give out, but it's not because we want to give every kid a trophy. Every kid on our team that's winning an award, we can honestly say, without them, we wouldn't be champions right now. They're winning awards because of everything that they brought. You take one of these kids away, we don't win. That's just how tight-knit this group was. That's just how great it was to have these guys on this team. The first player we want to recognize is our sixth-grade MVP. And I got to teach this kid at Brookside for like two years, and he was absolute knucklehead sometimes. But I bust his chops a lot, and he actually came up to me at the end of the season and asked me, did I know that he was going to be as good of a football player as he was? And the answer was absolutely yes, because you can recognize talent. The kid's an absolute beast. A sixth grader playing with eighth graders, he was absolutely dominant. Sixth-grade MVP, Lamonte Brown. Say, mama, I made it. Seventh-grade MVP was actually our sixth-grade MVP last year. And when he stands up, I'm looking like eye to eye with this dude now. He's, he's just a grown man, and he's a seventh grader. We actually made him an honorary eighth grader this year, not just because of his size, but the ability to be a leader. He led on our offensive line, our defensive line, made big plays for us in the playoffs, returning fumbles for touchdowns, seventh-grade MVP, Derek Morton. I'll let you take that from Mr. Moore. He's a lot cooler than you. Now, far as the eighth grade goes, what we usually do is we have two defensive players for the regular season, two offensive players for the regular season. Made the playoffs, won a championship. So, this year, we're doing two defensive for the playoffs, two offensive for the playoffs. So, the first defensive MVP of the regular season. And this kid, we all knew, especially Coach Music, if we could ever get him to like come out of his shell and really step up and be more vocal and take on leadership, he was going to be a special player for us. He stepped up vocally, work ethic, everything that we coached him to do, he did it. He's probably the most coachable kid I've ever coached in my life. Jake Darby, defensive player.
Congratulations, Jim.
The second defensive player of the regular season. I gave him junk last year because he was as soft as cotton-nail tissue. But this year, he turned into an absolute beast to the point of where I was like, where in the world did this kid come from? I knew he didn't catch as many touchdowns as he wanted to on offense, but on defense, he was an absolute beast. He put fear in the opposition's heart. Daniel Kaufman. This next kid, I like to call him Mr. Stay Ready, because if you stay ready, you don't have to get ready. And this kid, I guarantee you, if football started 10 minutes from now, he would absolutely be ready to throw on the pads, and he would probably destroy everything in his path. And anytime we needed to pound the opposition, to grind it, to run the clock, we could hand him the ball and trust him to just, just keep the ball moving for us and run the clock. Offensive MVP, Peyton Music. The other offensive MVP for the regular season is Mr. Primetime. Touchdown waiting to happen. I bet you if I gave him a ball right now, he'd probably score about three touchdowns. Once he learned the offense, once he learned the flow of what it was we were doing, it just clicked for him. And anytime we needed a big play, we could count on him to, to go pay dirt every single time. Offensive MVP, Kamonte Braxton. Now, for the playoffs, I got to tell a quick story about this guy, because I really got to compliment his parents for their sacrifice and thinking about the team first. Someone in their household was sick, and they thought about the team, and they didn't want to cost us our season. So, they actually quarantined him for the whole week while they were waiting on test results. And thank the Lord, these test results came back negative. He came back that Friday, and we, the moment he stepped back on the field, we knew we were going to beat Danville. And throughout the playoffs, he was an absolute rock in the middle, an absolute grown man, Keelan Daniel. Look at him. He's like my size. You still can't whoop me, man. I just want you to know that. The other defensive MVP, I don't think he's here right now, but he, Coach Music decided he wanted to do some things with him in the game plan, to where we wanted to blitz him more. And throughout the playoffs, he was in the backfield, just giving Danville, Boyle County, absolute fits. Not only that, when Boyle County started gaining some momentum, he got a key interception that absolutely put the nail in the coffin for him. Not only that, his punting was, he flipped the field to where, Music, did Danville even make it across the 50-yard line? Like, that's just how special this kid was. So, Malakai Simmons. The next player, if you look at the stat sheet, you'd be like, man, I don't know about this guy being an MVP. One of the reasons why his stats aren't as high as they should be, because Kamonte and Reed kept dropping the ball every time he threw it to him. But one of the big things about playing the quarterback position is being able to process information. And from sixth grade all the way up to this year, we looked at this kid's intelligence. We knew this kid can process information. He can put us in the right situations, not hurt us, manage the game excellently. He dealt with us yelling a lot of different information at him, and he never folded under the pressure. So, Will Harrison. Now, those of you who got your cameras, I want you to take a picture of all this gray hair and my beard, because before I met this kid, there was like none in there. No kid on this team absolutely worked my nerves the way that this kid does. But the reason why he works my nerves so much is because he's special. Like, he, he, he is like special, special from a talent perspective. Like, you could literally see this kid playing on Sunday someday. He is that good. Boyle County, they're probably still having nightmares about him running up and down the field on them. Four touchdowns. We kept saying all year, we were like, man, Reed is due for a breakout game, and he saved his best for last. So, Sean Reed. Now, the next three awards are my three favorite to give out. They're the Jaguar Award, and they symbolize excellence, sacrifice, leadership, hard work, great work ethic. And we give out one to a sixth grader, seventh grader, eighth grader. The sixth grader that's going to get it is a kid who came out, and I don't think he ever complained once. Every single thing we asked him to do, he stepped up to the plate, did everything we wanted him to do. He, he even saw where we needed him to play certain positions and would volunteer for it. He gave our 18 excellent looks in practice on defense, and he's going to be a rock star for us if he continues to play football. So, Carson Lear, sixth-grade Jaguar Award. Malakai Simmons, come up here and get your defensive MVP award. There's Malakai. Look at him. Look at you. Looked like you just woke up. I still love you, Malakai. Hey, you going to let the other guys get their shine? You can go over. The seventh-grade MVP. And I'd probably say my best coaching job all year long was actually getting the chance to coach this kid, to quit being what he thought everybody else wanted him to be and to just be Joey. Once we had that conversation of like, look, man, I don't need you to be Drew Brees. I don't need you to be Peyton Manning. I don't need you to be Tom Brady. I need you to be Joey Schwinger, because I love Joey Schwinger just the way that he is. And he came in, put in maximum effort. There were times in practice, he took an absolute beating, kept getting right back up. I can't wait to see the type of young man that he grows to be in. If he continues developing that, he's going to make an amazing husband and father someday. So, Joey Schwinger. And before I get to the eighth-grade MVP, I almost forgot, we have a most improved player, or the Jaguar Award for the eighth grade. We have a most improved player. And this guy, he, he may not be the most talented player in the world, but getting a kid to see, hey, man, if you just put in a little bit of work ethic, if you just try a little bit harder, if you focus a little bit more, you can do amazing things. And just him listening to the coaching, he actually turned into one of the best offensive linemen in our conference, Landon Walton. It's no wonder they didn't try to gang up on me and beat me up this past year, man. Y'all look like y'all got bigger. Last but not least, and I'll just put it to you this way. Growing up, I had favorite football players like Reggie White, Lawrence Taylor. I was a huge running back fan, so I loved Gale Sayers. Thousands and thousands of football players I've watched in my life. And just this past year, this, this dude became my absolute favorite football player of all time. If you want to know what sacrifice looks like, you can look at what James Burbage did for our football team this year. We were one kid away, one kid away, and he saw a need for us on the offensive line. And the littlest guy on the team has the most gigantic heart. And the moment we stuck him in that position, and understand this also, he's just as good of a running back as any other running back we have on the team. But he sacrificed scoring a ton of touchdowns in order to be on the line, making sure he put the team on his back to give us exactly what we needed. Absolute leader, just like Joey. Can't wait to see what type of husband and father he grows up to be, because if he keeps the attitude, the mindset that he has, he's going to be an amazing one. Eighth-grade Jaguar Award, James Burbage. That's really all I got. There's, there's really nothing special about me. I just happen to be the guy that God chose to put in this position. I'm grateful every day that he did. He gave me amazing dudes to hold me accountable, amazing parents who make amazing sons that come out on the field and do amazing things. So, greatly appreciate the opportunity, greatly appreciate y'all having us here. Thank you very much.
We also have these certificates for each of your players, all 55 of them. So, if you could get those out to them, we would appreciate it. And one more time, a round of applause for our champions. Like I've told everybody else, you're more than welcome to stay for this two-hour meeting, or you can take off running and dispatch.
I'll just say, I've, I've been around, I've been around a lot of middle school athletic programs in my time as, as principal. And I said it after Coach Butler, the day after, I think, when he stopped by after they earned this. This was a really challenging year. A lot of teams have struggled to build any kind of momentum. It's no, it's no doubt that he's developed a lot of skill and talent that these kids had. But I told him, I don't remember the content of what he said, but specifically, but I know that his message to the players after they won at home against Mercer that night was one that really touched me in a way that I could tell that he valued and cared for all these kids, and most importantly, that he cared about their character and developed them into young men. So, I told him I appreciated that, and just he's definitely a special coach. We just appreciate all of his work for, for these kids. So, thank you.
I know. I'm ready to run through the wall for that guy. Boyle County's got some of the worst sports fan parents.
Every year, the Kentucky Arts Educators Association recognizes one outstanding art teacher for the entire state of Kentucky. This is a very prestigious award and one where obviously there are multiple people competing for this. And we were fortunate enough to land this guy four years ago.
Is this your fifth year?
Okay.
We'll end the fifth year against the May.
Okay, so we were fortunate to land this guy five years ago. He is the art teacher at Warner Elementary. He's one of those guys that does more than impact what's going on into his, in his classroom. He truly does impact that entire school, the culture of Jessamine County, and then he has actually stepped up and taken other leadership roles at the state level. So, he's, he's actually helping with some initiatives to even bring new educators into the profession and keep them there. So, he's not just a talented artist. I think he's passionate about kids and passionate about the profession. And he was recognized already for this award, but I wanted to bring him before you guys today just to thank him personally and publicly for everything that he's done. And this is something, while he got a much nicer award and a bigger award than what I'm going to give him, I'm going to give him our Jessamine County Schools coin. This is a coin that is important to me, because it really does recognize those individuals that are helping live up to our vision, Jessamine County School vision. And the thing that really stands out to me when I think about the vision in Jessamine County and Mr. Johnson, is that he is absolutely helping our students find that passion and purpose for, for the arts. So, I truly appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Absolutely. And you're more than welcome to say something if you'd like.
Say something?
Yeah, if you'd like to.
I don't want to take up too much time. I just want to say, I had a very supportive family growing up. My, my parents and my sister, always encouraging me to do art. And my, my wife and girls, the greatest thing for me was having my girls go to school with me when I taught in Lexington years ago, and I got to be their art teacher and their daddy at the same time. It was, it was great. It was, it was just, it was the best. And I've, I've been just very blessed. I was welcomed, welcomed into Jessamine County here, and it's just been, it was just a great transition into this community and literally in Nicholasville and Jessamine itself. So, I just, I feel very blessed. And I have a great principal. Ms. Coy has just been wonderful to all the things that we want to do with art and the teachers and staff and the families. And I have amazing students that I just, I'm very grateful that I'm at the point now, I've had many of them since first grade, and I got to see them grow and, and do all these things, and they, and they know all my habits, and I know their habits. And I also want to thank Amy, Amy Herrod, our arts director, who just really has been great with coordinating all these things and getting our, our kids' work out to the community. So, but thank you so much for having me here tonight. Thank you.
And the next time you're at Warner Elementary, definitely go to his classroom. It's one you'll never forget. He pulls in stuff that he has found that he knows are going to just draw kids into the arts. And I mean, you can get lost in his classroom. Any toy that you played with as a child is likely in there somewhere. Yeah, and he incorporates that, that into the instructions. So, definitely stop by and see him sometime. Thank you. Congratulations. I, I do want to, just briefly, as a celebration, just recognize that we had our students back last week, a successful A-B schedule. I think the community has been very supportive in trying to make sure our students are as prepared for that transition and following recommendations and guidance to...
prepared for that transition and following recommendations and guidance to combat the COVID virus, so appreciative of all of that. And I just want you guys to know that it was exciting to see how happy students were to get back in the classroom, and how eager the teachers were to get to see them in person. I consider that a really, really successful week last week. And I also wanted to recognize and let you guys know that we did work with Health Department to roll out the vaccines for our staff, and today we successfully vaccinated approximately 150 staff members, and will continue to do that work throughout the remainder of this week and into a couple of days next week. And then finally, the last recognition is for our board members. This is National Board of Education Month, and mentioned that last, or a couple weeks ago, but I do want you guys to take a moment, if you could, to open the gift. I know you can tell what it is, but I really want you to look at the back. Yeah, we hid it very secretively there for you, but if you look at the back, I think that probably will mean a whole lot to you guys. Yeah, and we are always looking for opportunities to show our unity, and this was an old design that Patrice Jones resurrected, and we just felt like it was perfectly fitting, and it's a great shirt to wear to any athletic event or anything in Jessamine County because it does show that unity. But we appreciate everything that our board members do to support east, west, and all that. Thank you. And the only other thing I had was a construction update coming from Val.
Well, I'm gonna let Jason speak real quickly about Rosemont, then I'll do mine.
So we don't really have that big of a Rosemont update, we're still meeting with Joe, Maggie, and your team to design the school. Next month, you guys will get the construction documents to approve, so we can go out to bid, and if it's April, we will request them back to you, hopefully with something that everyone there. That's it, Val.
And in front of you, you have a handout from Margie Jacobs for the CTE renovations. Real quickly, the West Jessamine High School project, that portion of the project is basically complete, 95% of the punch list items are done, we're just finishing up a few warranty type things that are going on, but it's a whole West Jessamine High School, so everything that's left pretty much is at JCTC. All of the loud noise demolition and construction of plumbing and underslab and all that kind of stuff was done while kids were out. So now they're in the process over the next few, next few days and weeks of finishing up wallboard, doing the floor, getting the last two classrooms, and some work upstairs in our career ed, or in our career support area, which is upstairs, in a classroom that was up there that they'll do for counseling for career, as well as in our biomedical two classrooms at the basement. But the goal is still that it will be done by the spring break, and be able to move on that today. You'll see some pictures on the back. The greenhouse out at West High is complete at this particular point, even though the picture there says nearly complete, they have completed in the last week or so. Shows you some pavement, some fencing, and some things that were done at West High in the top three pictures. The bottom three pictures is a lot of the work that was done, basically in the biomedical, the old ag rooms in the basement floor, or the first floor down at the lower end at JCTC. Very exciting that we're done. There will be one item on the board for a change order, actually two separate change orders. When we get to that, if you have some specific questions, but just to let you know, it is a significant increase, but is not going to cost the district any money, and I can explain that a little bit later when we get to that. Anybody have any questions? Very exciting that it's almost finished, so.
Thanks, Val.
Yep.
Is that it for your side, Mr. Moore? Any board member communications? All right, no audience communications. All right, we'll take a brief recess here at 7:36. Just to get us going. Here.
Vice Chair, Bobby Welch.
Denise Adams, Amy Day, and Debra Hood. We have five present, we have a quorum.
All right, everyone sees the agenda for tonight. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, so Mr. Moore, we need to elect, are we just doing the officers, is that what we're doing?
Yes, first, or the actual election of the board members. And there's typically a president, a vice president.
Okay, but we know, but we know the board members though, right?
For president, to serve in the role as president.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a nomination for the position of President of the Jessamine County School District Finance Corporation?
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. Any other nominations? All those in favor of me serving as the President of the School District Finance Corporation, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. All right, we now need a nomination for the position of Vice President of the School District Finance Corporation.
Nominate Bobby Welch.
Okay. Any other nominations? All right, all those in favor of Bobby Welch serving as Vice President of the School District Finance Corporation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, and we need a nomination for the position of Secretary of the Jessamine County School District Finance Corporation.
Nominate Matt Moore, open position as Secretary.
All right, I'll second. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Matt Moore serving as Secretary of the School District Finance Corporation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, now for the position of Treasurer of the School District Finance Corporation.
I'll second.
All right, I'll second. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Jason Urenz serving as Secretary, or I'm sorry, Treasurer of the School District Finance Corporation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. I guess, do we technically still, should we, did we go out of order a little bit? Should we have done the nominations of us serving as officers?
Probably should.
Okay.
All right, I'm making the motion to nominate Denise Adams, Amy Day, Debra Hood, Steve Scrivener, and Bobby Welch to hold the position as Jessamine County District Finance Corporation.
Directors.
Directors.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, we did that a little clunky, but I think we got through it. Where is that? Sorry, trying to find my, where was our?
Motion to approve B3, the approval of December 14, 2020, Jessamine County, SDFC meeting minutes.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Make a motion to approve item B4, the approval to file the Kentucky Secretary of State 2021 Annual Report.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, we adjourned at 7:41. All right, it is 7:42, we're gonna reconvene the regular January meeting of the Board of Education, and that brings us to our consent agenda. Do we have, looks like we've got 23 items on the consent agenda tonight. Do we have any questions or comments for the superintendent or his team? I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Okay. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, Mr. Moore, item G1.
Yes, this is the draft budget for fiscal year 21-22, and just as a reminder, this budget truly reflects a mirror of this previous year's budget, and know that any adjustments that we're gonna make outside of this budget will come in the form of separate agenda items. So this is approving the operations as we have this previous year. So it's my recommendation that you approve the draft budget for fiscal year 21-22.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve item G1. And, all right, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. All right, Mr. Moore, G2.
The second action item is change order number one, and this is to rectify an issue, a design issue that we had with our HVAC system and its circulating, are resolving a humidity issue. Val had made reference to this, while this is a price of $31,327, this is not going to be to our expense because it truly was a design issue, so this is going to be picked up by the engineers to resolve this issue. So it is my recommendation that the board approve DPO change order number one to increase the direct purchase order sum for air equipment company in the amount of $31,327.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right.
Action item number three is to resolve the same issue that I just discussed, and this again, will not be an expense for Jessamine County Schools, this will be picked up by Strout-Tate-Wilson engineers. So it's my recommendation that the board approve change order number 15 to increase the construction contract sum in the amount of $9,733.10.
Make a motion to approve G3. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Moore, G4.
The final action item is to resolve a error that we made with this initial request. If you recall, we asked that we increase the daily rate for substitutes by $50 per day because of the challenges we were having. In the initial request, we had actually placed effective July 1st, however, it was our intentions to start that as soon as the board had approved it, so we're requesting to make that a change, that change to make it effective November 23rd, 2020. And this has resulted in a lot of additional substitutes signing up.
I'll make a motion to approve item G4. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. We good? Oh, just making sure, I wanted to make sure there wasn't an issue. Okay. You good? Do we have a motion to enter closed session? All right, motion by Denise, we have a second. All those in favor of any entering closed session at 7:46, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, we're now in closed session. Can we get a few minutes alone?